The broadcast of the emergency meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council, and I'm going to call to order this special emergency meeting of the city council for June 5th. This meeting was called by Mayor Frye so that we may consider items of the terms of stipulation for the proposed temporary restraining order in connection with the civil rights investigation filed by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights this past Tuesday. That case relates directly to the death of George Floyd while in custody of former members of the Minneapolis Police Department, as well as the past 10 years of potential patterns of racial discrimination in our Minneapolis Police Department. Before we begin, I'll note that, excuse me, the mayor, council and council members and staff are participating remotely in this meeting, as well as representatives from the State Department of Human Rights, and that remote participation is authorized under Minnesota statutes 13D.021 due to the declared public health emergency from the coronavirus. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the rules so that we may verify a quorum for this meeting.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Reich. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll, for the record, verify that we do have a quorum for this meeting. The agenda for today's meeting is before us. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk will call the rule on the adoption of the agenda.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries in the agenda. Is adopted. Colleagues, the sole purpose of this emergency meeting is to consider approving the terms of a stipulation for a proposed temporary restraining order with the state's Human Rights Department in their case against the city's Police Department. Before we begin, I'll just very briefly outline our process today. First, we'll invite Commissioner Lucero to present the order to us and ask that she summarize it for us and the public, the components of the temporary restraining order, along with how this fits into the next steps of the longer term process. With her will be our Civil Rights Director Velma Corbell and our interim city attorney Eric Nielsen. And the commissioner will be able to introduce the members of her team who are in attendance as well. I want to note that Commissioner Lucero has joined us by phone after not being able to get into our electronic format here, so we will do everything we can to support the presentation in that format. We will be able to have questions from council members after the presentation. I want to note that Commissioner Lucero has made herself available to every member of the city council multiple times over the last several days, and has invited significant feedback from this body, much of which has been incorporated into the document. And I thank you, Commissioner, for that time. We have committed, I have committed, to attempt and do our best to vote on this item by about 1:30 PM, in accordance with the state's timeline. If we have not completed our work, if we've completed the work but we're in a long discussion at that time, I will move to call the question at about 1:25 PM. I just want my colleagues to know that. That would require a second and a vote of two-thirds of the council, which is nine members, to call that question. And that will be up to the body, but I did want to highlight that I had made that commitment after, again, many, many hours of engagement of the city council over the past number of days. After that vote, we would have as much time as council members would like to take to make comments and to put this into a greater context, or to, again, make any comments about the action that we have taken. And I know that's a little bit unusual, but it's an unusual circumstance. So with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Lucero for the presentation, and we will begin. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bender. Hi, everyone. My name is Rebecca Lucero, and I'm the Commissioner for the Department of Human Rights. I'd like to start out quickly by introducing two people who are with me today. First is Irina Vaynerman, the deputy commissioner, and Nick Pladson, general counsel, also the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. As I'm working here to get back on the computer system, I'm going to ask Irina to kick us off by providing that context of what brings us here today, and I'll be available here in a second. Deputy Commissioner Vaynerman, can you take over?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to the council for having us here today. So, as we all know, we're here today because earlier, a few days earlier, the commissioner filed a charge of discrimination against Minneapolis Police Department investigating patterns or practices of the Minneapolis Police Department to determine if there are systemic practices that have led to racial discrimination, particularly for people of color and specifically for Black community members. We're here today because, under the Minnesota Human Rights Act, there's a provision, Minnesota statute 363A.28 subdivision 6E, that permits the department to seek, sorry, I'm going to turn on my camera here, sorry about that, that permits the department to seek emergency court action or a temporary restraining order, to seek relief where there is immediate harm being done, and the commissioner has reason to believe that there is immediate harm. And so it is under that statutory right that we find ourselves here today with a temporary restraining order and a consented-stipulated order where the city and the Department of Human Rights have come together to try to immediately stop that harm, that irreparable harm. Commissioner, would you like to walk through the details of the proposed order?
Yes, thank you very much. So if you start on what I believe is the bottom of page four of the order, I'd like to talk through the immediate implementation changes that we're looking at. And there's two sections here. There's the immediate implementation, and then there's the strategic pieces that allow us to move forward strategically for next steps here. So first off, what I'm going to say is I'm going to talk about several immediate implementation changes. And I just want to stress and highlight that none of this is new, none of this is about a new conversation. All of this has been recommended many times before. Community members have been talking about this for a very long time. Leadership has been talking about these. And so I just want to honor the tremendous amount of work that has gone on for years and generations to move these kinds of pieces forward. So we're going to start with the first one, which bans chokeholds. And for each one of these, I'm going to talk about what the current situation is and what this changes. So first, banning chokeholds. Currently, chokeholds and neck restraints are permitted in Minneapolis. In fact, in the policy and procedure manual, it is permitted, under a variety of situations, to utilize a chokehold to even render someone unconscious. And if you're reading the news, you'll see reports at how frequently that is done in Minneapolis. So what this changes, chokeholds and neck restraints are prohibited for any reason. This temporary restraining order and this order requires the city to amend its Police Department policy and procedure manual, excuse me, to make that change. Second, there's a duty to report. So what's going on right now? Right now, under the policy and procedure manual, the onus is on a person who uses force to report that force, and at different times. So let's talk about what this changes. If an officer observes a colleague using any unauthorized force, that officer must report the incident while still on the scene to the commander or commander's superior. And importantly here, an officer has an affirmative duty to report unauthorized force regardless of tenure or rank. The next area is duty to intervene. And again, you might say, isn't this there? And you would be correct. Under the Police Department Policy and Procedure Manual, at section 5303, there's a general duty to intervene. It stresses that employees have an obligation to protect the public and other employees. So what does this change? First and foremost, again, it clarifies and stresses that you must intervene regardless of tenure and rank. Secondly, it affirms that you must do so both verbally and physically. Third, it adds additional teeth. If an officer fails to intervene, they will be subject to discipline to the same severity as if they themselves engaged in the prohibited use of force. Moving on to the fourth item here, says crowd control authorization during protests and demonstrations. Right now, under the Police Department Policy and Procedure Manual, your section 5313, a supervisor is authorized to approve chemical agents in crowd control situations. So what does this change? During protests and demonstrations, use of all crowd control weapons, such as chemical agents, must be authorized only by the chief, or if the chief is unavailable, a designee at the rank of deputy chief or higher. This also requires city leadership to make changes to these sections to ensure that these decisions are being made at the right level. To be clear, this doesn't mean that crowd control measures won't be used. It just means the decision must rest with the chief. The fifth area that I want to talk about here is the timely discipline decision. Right now, it's already a requirement for disciplined decisions to be made within 45 days. However, it is not occurring, and there is a backlog of these decisions. There are a variety of reasons for that. However, we need these cleaned up. If someone complains about a situation that occurs, and the OPCR finds merit, we need action immediately. It cannot languish. So what's changed? It requires 45 days to clean up that backlog. And moving forward, these decisions need to be made faster. They must be made within 30 days. They cannot languish further. It also stresses the importance that if and when the decisions are made, they must be immediately made available to the public via the city's website and made available for physical inspection. The sixth area here that I'll highlight is called the body-worn camera footage review. Right now, camera footage data exists. That's great. However, it's only reviewed when there's a complaint. Furthermore, right now, there is no audit ability granted. So let's talk about what's changed here. Camera footage must be audited. It must be strategic. It's intended to identify discriminatory practices in policing, including officer misconduct. It stresses that complaints on behalf of the Minneapolis, complaints can be filed or amended on behalf of the Minneapolis Civil Rights Department. These are immediate implementation changes that are designed to stop ongoing irreparable harm, particularly to Black, Indigenous, and communities of color who have suffered generational pain and trauma as a result of systemic and institutional racism. This is just a start. There is a lot more work to do here, and that work must and will be done with deep community engagement. There is a lot more to do. And that leads us to the next section, which is numbers seven through 14, that work towards building towards systemic change. So first here, number seven, talks about how, on or before July 30th, there will be a list prepared, talking about where Minnesota laws exist that impede public transparency or prevent the mayor and police chief, or impede civilian oversight from disciplining and terminating police officers. Numbers eight through numbers 13 are all related to the charge of discrimination that was filed earlier this week and the ongoing investigation of that charge. Numbers eight through 13 provide different stipulations that talk about how the city will cooperate with Minnesota Department of Human Rights and its investigators to help provide access to employees, facilities, documents, and data so that this investigation can move forward quickly, and we can see what systemic changes can come about. There's also provisions in here that stress that all forms of retaliation, intimidation, coercion, or adverse action against any person, including any city employee, who reports misconduct or cooperates with NDHR's commissioner's charge investigation, that that is prohibited. And you can see those retaliation pieces laid out in 11, 12, and 13. The last provision here is for the parties agreed to defend the provisions of this stipulated order in the event that any provision of the order is challenged in court. So again, I'll stress that this is not the end. This is an ongoing investigation. Community engagement will be at the heart of how this work moves forward, and I look forward to continued conversations. I want to turn it over to Director Corbell to offer any further comments at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know Director Corbell was working to get into the meeting, and I know that staff has sent a call-in number in case that option was needed. Director Corbell, have you been able to join the meeting?
Director Corbell, are you on the line?
And I think I'm actually on now.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Knowing that Director Corbell is the lead of this work within the Civil Rights Department, do we have anyone else from Civil Rights here as the director works to get into the meeting?
Madam President, Ms. Corbell is joining as we speak. Hopefully, she'll be on in just a minute or two. I'm so sorry.
Great, thank you. Thank you. I will note, too, that we've had, as I think everyone knows, a number of, I think, intentional issues with our website and different electronic communications. Our IT team and technical staff have both restored our website, which keeps going down, as well as created an alternative electronic method for members of the public to watch the meeting to share that. So we've shared that out publicly.
Madam President, I believe Ms. Corbell is in the meeting. Ms. Corbell, you may need to press star six on your phone in order to unmute your phone.
I am here.
Great, thank you, Director. We just heard from Commissioner Lucero, who presented an overview of the document, and she was turning it over to you for comments about the city's work on this.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I apologize that I have no video this afternoon, but I hope everybody can hear me just fine. I would just like to say, first of all, I am the director of Civil Rights for the city of Minneapolis, and this is my first opportunity to offer condolences to the family of George Floyd. On behalf of every employee in the Department of Civil Rights, we offer our prayers for peace and comfort to the family as you take your loved one home to his final resting place. I would like to say thank you to Commissioner Lucero for her work and the work of her department going forward. I want to voice my gratitude to you for engaging the city early in this process. The work you have directed our staff to do, and the work that you've required of us during the course of what is essentially a preliminary investigation to develop this document that is before the council today, has been done with compassion and grace. Because for anyone listening or watching, make no mistake about it, this is a state Human Rights Department investigation. The fact that the commissioner has reached out to the city this early in the process is typically not what happens in an enforcement action. What normally happens is that the enforcement agency, in this case, the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, will learn of a potential discrimination by an entity, a respondent, in this case, the Minneapolis Police Department. They would develop a charge document, and usually, before the respondent will know anything has happened, that charge will land on their doorstep. So how do I know this? So in the last approximately 20 years as the head of an enforcement agency, or as someone who's responded to charges, I have never seen this done this way before. I have heard Commissioner Lucero say in the days leading up to this meeting that she knows that the city has attempted to make changes over the years, but understands that there have been circumstances that have prevented the city from going as far with police reforms as is needed. So we are hopeful that by escalating this to a state-led civil rights pattern and practice investigation, all of the entities that have had a role in making these changes, especially the state legislature, will be compelled to act to change the laws that impede the city from making the deep systemic change required, and that the community has been demanding for decades. To my colleagues across the city enterprise, over the next weeks and months, this complaint will not focus simply on the processes inside the Minneapolis Police Department. It will question any process that has the ability to affect the changes that are needed to make these broad, deep reforms. It will be intense and intentional, and it will feel and be invasive, and it should be. If we are serious about making the changes this time, we need to be about the work. So let's do our part as an entire city to respond. Over the last several days, I have been privileged to help coordinate the early response to prepare this document that is before the council today. And the Civil Rights Department is available, of course, to use our staff to help facilitate this process to its conclusion. Going forward, the office of the city attorney will represent the city, as it always does, in any legal matters. To the community, there will be opportunities to engage with you. But to avoid reinventing the will and to expedite this process, I encourage the Human Rights Department to utilize ongoing and recent community-led or community-informed efforts to bring about police reform. Because this is a Minnesota human rights complaint, I also want to note that community engagement activities related to this charge will be directed by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. But the city has offered the use of the community engagement services of its neighborhood and community relations department. In closing, I would like to thank city attorney Eric Nielsen and the city attorney's staff, Trina Chirinos, Tracy Fussi, and Sarah Lathrop. I'd also like to say thank you to the Civil Rights staff, Imani Jafar and Andrew Hawkins, and thank you Peter Ednett in the mayor's office, as all of these people have been involved in creating this early response to human rights. Thank you for your time, Madam Chair. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Director Corbell, for those words and for your immense leadership now and always. Is there any other further presentation from staff? I don't hear any. I'll take that as a no. I am going to take this opportunity to restate the joint statement that all 12 members of the Minneapolis City Council made the other day, and I just think it's important, knowing that we are holding longer comment for after a vote likely, that we restate the value direction that the council is taking as we respond to this action, as Director Corbell noted, which is being driven by the state. So I will read that. I will invite Mayor Frye to make comments, and then I would like to give Council Vice President the opportunity to comment before we vote. I'll see if there are any technical questions before we do call that vote. This is a statement from all 12 members of the Minneapolis City Council on the Department of Human Rights action. Again, this was made prior to today's detailed TRO, but states our approach to this legal action and matter. George Floyd should be alive today. Mr. Floyd's death is just one instance of unthinkable violence against Black men by law enforcement generally and the Minneapolis Police Department specifically. Our community, especially communities of color, has a deep mistrust of law enforcement, given the actions of Minneapolis police officers over decades. We welcome and fully support the Minnesota Department of Human Rights' robust investigation of the Minneapolis Police Department. We urge the state to use its full weight to hold the Minneapolis Police Department accountable for any and all abuses of power and harms to our community, and stand ready to aid in the process as full partners. The city council's oversight of the Minneapolis Police Department has been historically constrained by the city charter and state law, and we welcome new tools to pursue transformational structural changes to how the city provides for public safety. We look forward to doing this critical work with our partners at the state, continuing to support the leadership of Civil Rights Director Velma Corbell and Police Chief Medario Aradondo, and ensuring that the community voices are fully centered and the process announced today, and that was on Tuesday. And I will note again that Commissioner Lucero and her team has invited incredible feedback from council members. I know many of the ideas that are here are in part because council members and our own city staff raised them and highlighted them as areas of work, and that council members, if anything, requested that the language be stronger and broader. So thank you all for the efforts that brought us here today, and I will invite Mayor Frye to comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much to Director Corbell and the city staff, who have been really working tirelessly with the state. Thank you to Commissioner Lucero. This is a moment in time where we can totally change the way our police department operates. We can quite literally lead the way in our nation, enacting more police reform than any other city in the entire country, and we cannot fail. I really want to thank city staff, who did all of the very hard work in getting us here today, and I want to thank everyone at the state as well that have gotten us to this point. There's still quite a bit of work to go, and we know that the work has been going on for years and decades, but in many instances, mayors and council members and elected officials and chiefs, all of the above, have been thwarted in getting some of the change that has been so necessary, and they've been thwarted by police union protections and laws that so severely limit accountability among police departments. And breaking through some of these consistent barriers and shifting the full culture of policing and addressing the systemic racism is going to really require all of us working hand in hand. So I'm absolutely ready to implement the immediate items that are under my control. And additionally, while some of the immediate actions, like duty to report and duty to intervene, already exist in our policies and procedures, we will work now to align them entirely with the specific policies that are outlined in the TRO. And I'm very encouraged to see the direct accountability of the chief in crowd control situations as well. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again, I do trust this chief, and I believe that he is primed to lead this work in this city and set an example for how police reform can look for the rest of the country. But we don't want to make policy for the individual. Good governance requires that we know who is making the decision and who is responsible. When the chief makes a call, he's responsible, and when I appoint the chief, I am responsible for those decisions too. I take that responsibility. That's how the process has to work, and the buck stops there. I also appreciate the request for support on legislative changes that are necessary to fully achieve our collective goals. The city is currently prevented from many of these reforms, thanks to laws that make it very difficult at the state level. And I cannot tell you how many changes that many mayors before me, and myself included, have wanted to make that are thwarted by the union contract or by laws at the state that prevent us from going forward, and now we can finally get this right. And so we've been propelled by this extraordinary energy and unprecedented recognition, and that we have to be on the precipice of change, and that there are reforms that are just generations past due. So we need to seize this moment and channel our collective pain into collective action, and that begins right now. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Commissioner and state, Commissioner Corbell. Thank you for all the work. We appreciate it. Let's move forward on this together.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Vice President, would you like to make comments? I'll just pause and make sure council- I'll just pause and make sure. Council Vice President?
I'm sorry, Madam President. What was the question?
Oh, I just was offering you the chance to make any comments you'd like to. We'll likely hold the majority of council member comments until after the vote for time reasons, but I wanted to offer you the chance to speak now.
No, thank you so much. I just want to be really brief and say that I welcome these initial immediate changes, and I look forward to working with my colleagues, the department, the community, to implement these long overdue changes addressing the systemic issues that has made public safety and policing deadly and detrimental for so many people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. With that, I'll just see if there are any technical questions before we vote. And if there are none, it will be because, again, staff has made themselves so available for questions up until this moment. I don't see any. So with that, Clerk, so I will move to adopt the temporary restraining order as proposed by staff and the Department of Human Rights. Is there a second?
Second.
And we will be holding discussion until after this vote. Appreciations to my colleagues for that unusual procedural situation. So with that, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison? Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Reich?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins?
Aye.
Council President Bender?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that motion is adopted. So with that, I would like to, again, I would like to thank the Department of Human Rights, Commissioner Lucero, or the team. Is there anything else you'd like to say before we move to councilor comments?
I just want to thank everyone for all of their work this week. It's been a long week. We've got a lot of work to do moving forward. We cannot let George Floyd's death be in vain. We must use this as a catalyst opportunity to make dramatic change. And I appreciate the partnership and work from everyone moving forward. Have a great day.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate your time and your energy on all of this work for the past week or so. I just wanted to say that I, again, welcome the investigation from the state of Minnesota into this. I am really eager to hear back about those state policies that can be changed to ensure that police departments across the state can have better accountability mechanisms. And I wanted to restate something I had mentioned last week during our press conference in that a lot of the work that we're seeing now is made possible by the power and voice of the social movements that have come together to change this time. I will say that me personally, as the council member of the Ninth Ward and the Chair of Public Safety, I am seeing so many people who I believe did have a good faith in being able to change the system, stepping up and saying, "This system does not work. This system cannot be reformed, and we must do something different." And so that, to me, really sets the tone for some of the conversations we're having, where reform will never be enough. There is no departmental policy that prevents an officer from using his body to kill someone in broad daylight. As much as we try to codify those procedures and those systems, if those individual people are part of a broader police culture that serves as the invisible glue to how those systems move and act, we know that then we have to completely rethink public safety for our city. I did want to just say that, moving forward, a couple of pieces are really important for me to state on the public record. And I've noticed, number one, that people are talking about the future of the Third Precinct. And as the council member for that area, I will say that I do not support rebuilding the Third Precinct as a police headquarters or operations. I think that it is extremely important for us to symbolically and physically respect the legacy of the moment by ensuring that that area is reclaimed by community and by healing and by justice. And so I do not support rebuilding the headquarters of the Third Precinct on that site. And I want to work with you all to put together a community process that helps us arrive at a future for that site. And I want to use that process as an opportunity to engage with our community members in the same way we've been doing for the past week or so, block by block, working with residents, to promote healing and to promote accountability for ourselves, to each other, for the moment, for the movement, and to bring different players together to provide safety for our community in a way that centers those community voices. I will say the same thing for renaming Chicago Avenue. My office has started to look into the process of renaming Chicago Avenue, and I would like us to also lead a community process for the renaming of that street as part of the work to sear this moment in time into the bones of our city, so that we can forever remember what brought us together and why, and what brought that future forward that we're looking to build together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam President. And I first just want to start off with thanking Commissioner Lucero's collaborative approach to this order. We, as a city council, have inherited a deeply broken system of policing. Mayor Frye and Chief Aradondo have also inherited this reality. As a council member, I will tell you that I am not interested in any more reforms. Diversifying departments, body cams, trainings, residency requirements have all proven to not significantly impact changing cultures within police departments and the subsequent behaviors of officers. I am committed to complete transformation of how the city of Minneapolis keeps our residents safe. Many of us have said it before, but I think it's worth restating now that the institution of policing is founded on and rooted in white supremacy. Its history is slave-catching. I will admit that while I have had a radical vision for public safety, namely, fully institutionalizing and funding the public health approach to public safety, political constraints and will have forced me to compromise in ways I did not feel comfortable with to make progress outside of policing. Further, I have only heard from constituents who simply wanted to see more police. Despite this, I have been a relentless fighter for the public health approach to public safety to create new systems of public safety outside of policing that is rooted, that are rooted in community and justice. Now, the tide has dramatically shifted. Our entire city, including my constituents, are seeing in real time that this approach does work. We have been organizing community patrols to keep our neighborhoods safe during these incredibly challenging past couple of weeks. It has been tremendously beautiful to see and watch community members build power together in ways many had no idea they could before. Now, I am overwhelmingly hearing from constituents who want an entirely new system of public safety in our city. This complaint gives us the tool, new tools, to make this happen, and Chief Aradondo is the right person to lead from the law enforcement side. What is critical as we move forward is for us to not only transform law enforcement, but to build new alternative systems of public safety outside of policing. That includes both policy and budget investments. We, as a city, cannot simply give lip service about building these new systems. It's time for us to get serious about this work alongside community members who have been doing this work for decades and not getting paid for it. They are the experts, and we should be following their lead as we move forward. I am grateful to Commissioner Lucero and all who have, as well as Director Corbell, and all those who have been involved with this process thus far. It's really going to open up an opportunity for us to radically transform how we keep our residents safe here in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher? Councilmember Fletcher?
I was muted. I'm that guy. Sorry about that. I'll start again. I want to thank Commissioner Lucero deeply and the entire Minnesota Department of Human Rights team who worked on this. I'm really encouraged by the conclusions that you've come to in this short time, in this first week that you have been engaged in this. I think it shows that you're asking tough questions. I think it shows that you're serious about making changes and that you identified some of the most urgent things that our constituents were asking for as they work to process and think about the events of the last couple of weeks. And so this is a really strong first step, and I want to echo Director Corbell's thanks for the collaboration, because I recognize that it is not required, that, in fact, we are being sued. We're being sued by many victims of police violence. And now we're being sued on behalf of all of the people of Minnesota for our pattern of civil rights violations. And this enforcement action is something that we are being given a great deal of collaboration, and that is not always how this works. So I want to appreciate that. I also just wanted to address, I got a couple of emails from people in the last hour that makes me think that some of the policy debate that's happening around funding for police and on the question of disbanding our police department, which I've been vocal in thinking is something we should look at, got conflated with this meeting a little bit. And I think there were some people who thought that we were going to disband the police today. And so I just wanted to say to everybody, whether that is something that you were hoping for and you're disappointed that we're not doing that today, or whether that's something that you're panicked about and were really worried we were going to do today. We are so committed to a much, much deeper community process to really talk to you about what safety means, to really dig into what helps everybody feel safe. What do we like about our current system? What can we not tolerate about our current system? What can we envision as a future? And that is going to be a level of deep community engagement for us to all build that together, whatever the future of public safety in our city looks like. That we would never do that in a vote declared this quickly. So I just wanted to name for everybody that we are beginning a set of work that is going to mean deep structural change. And we are beginning a public process. And we are also beginning a lot of legal processes. And I am relieved to see these processes moving forward. I am deeply regretful that we didn't find a way to do it much sooner. And I'm committed to digging into the work with community and with Commissioner Lucero. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you, Council President. I also just wanted to kind of jump in quickly to make a couple points. First, I just want to thank the Minnesota Department of Human Rights for bringing this, and Commissioner Lucero for bringing this. But I think just to kind of go off what I've been hearing from other council members, like, this is limited. You know, this is something that is limited to the legal system. I want to be clear that the legal system has failed to bring justice to community and has failed to bring the transformative reforms that we really need right now, not just in Minneapolis, but throughout the country and throughout the world. So I want to be clear that there's going to be a very large role for city council, for the city itself, to bring about those reforms. I'm really excited to be hearing that kind of support, not just from my colleagues in City Hall, but throughout my own community, calling for that level of change. People and myself are just done with incremental change. It's been tried for decades with very good intentions, but the horrible outcomes that we've been seeing can't stand any longer. And we need to do something. I look forward to working with all of you and look forward to working with the commissioner as well to make those transformations happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? I just want to make sure councilmembers have a chance to comment if they'd like to, and it's welcomed. I don't see any. I will judge.
I could make a statement.
Councilmember Gordon?
I appreciate what everyone has been saying. I think I share those sentiments. I think it's clear that the city, we have failed in this capacity. If there was an opportunity to plead guilty, I think we should plead guilty. And I think in a way, that's what we're doing with this. We are now saying that we recognize, along with the state, that there has been systemic and institutional racism and longstanding problems in policing. And it's been, and as it says in the decree, this continuous harm was once again highlighted by the in custody death of George Floyd. We agree that the many previous efforts have not resolved the historic problems in policing in this community. I think to do that is going to take a massive effort. I think we have to be ready for a long-term push. I think there's going to be resistance along the way and pushback. But I'm not sure if we've ever had such an opportunity. And I welcome the State Department of Human Rights involvement and the courts and the judiciary and everybody on this issue, because we're going to need everybody leaning into it. And I hope, I hope that the Department of Human Rights will be a strong and independent voice, and they won't defer to the council or the mayor or anyone else, and they will rely on their own best efforts to seek and get justice and do what is right.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to lift up and echo the sentiments that I think Councilmember Kano raised, and that is, without the persistent, insistent advocacy, agitation, pushing of community, we would likely not be here today. So I want to thank all of those young people who have been out here in the streets for the past 11 days for bringing us to this point to ensure that the life of George Floyd and so many other hashtags will not go unappreciated. And yeah, I just want to lift up those voices of the young people in our communities. I think we have to continue to be engaged in our electoral system. We must continue to vote. Representation matters. And so I wanted to really just make those statements to the communities that have been pushing us for years and decades and to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't going to speak because I felt like a lot of my colleagues really said it better than I could really say it. And so I really echo a lot of the sentiments. But it felt maybe inappropriate to not at least acknowledge the work of Rebecca Lucero and her team. I think there were times where, there were times where the commissioner pushed us, and there were times where I felt like we were saying, "No, bring the hammer a little harder down on us," you know? And I felt like in that entire process, I felt incredibly heard. And I felt like my colleagues were heard. And so I want to thank, I want to thank you for, for, I want to, you know, thank us for being cooperative, but thank you for taking this action against the police department. I also just wanted to say, you know, look, I think that there were moments in my past two years in office where I felt like when it came to police reform, we are, you know, I was going as hard as I could, pushing for the hardest change that we could as a city. And I think that in retrospect, I'm learning that that wasn't the case, that in some ways, despite my best, my most earnest efforts, and they were earnest, I think that I failed. And I think that we, as a council, failed. And not only us, but obviously councils all around the country and councils before us here in Minneapolis failed to get a handle on this issue. I know that there's been some discussion that in 2012, the DOJ did a similar process with the Minneapolis Police Department and sort of gave us, gave our department a clean bill of health. And I think, I think I fear that this is another opportunity for us to fail if we aren't willing to push hard enough, if we are, if we're sort of shortchanging ourselves but convincing ourselves that we've done everything that we can. And so, you know, while I can't promise, you know, the city of Minneapolis that I won't fail, I can promise that I'm going to continue to reexamine, be self-aware, and push as hard as we can for the kind of safety that the city of Minneapolis deserves because this isn't it. So thank you to the commissioner, thank you to my colleagues, and I look forward to continuing this work.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you to my colleagues for all of your work over the last week and for our renewed commitment to really work and support each other. The way that this body is working together is important. And I know it takes effort for all of us to learn about each other and from each other, to listen, to support each other, to trust in each other's leadership. And I see that so strongly right now. I think sustaining that will be critical to us moving forward, not only with the state process, but with whatever else we are able to do as a city. You know, a lot of us were able to attend Mr. George Floyd's memorial service yesterday, and we learned a little bit about his life. We learned that he was a beloved son and brother and uncle, father and grandfather. We learned that his mother was a community center who took in children from all over the neighborhood for love and food and care in a home that was economically challenged and financially challenged, but as we heard time and time again from family members, just literally brimming with love and care. We learned that George was a father figure to his younger brothers and his nephews and many in the community who looked to him for leadership and support. And we're here because George is dead. And we're here because his family has called on us to act bravely and urgently. And I see the city council stepping up to answer that call. And I know looking back weighs heavily on all of us. There are moments when each of us could have done more and should have done more. And I think for us, as Councilwoman Ellison just so eloquently said, and by the way, Councilwoman Ellison, who's, you know, been a leader in calling for change, has so humbly said, "We all need to do better going forward." So I think this is one step in a many, many years process. And like others, I'm hearing from so many in our community right now. We know that our community needs to be front and center in this work. And we also know that our community is tired. They've asked for change over and over and over, and they want to see urgency. So together, we'll balance those two needs, to act urgently with the information we have from our community and to invite every single member of our community into the conversation about transforming public safety in Minneapolis. As a white person, I want to say to my white neighbors, if you're experiencing a fear or lack of safety for the first time, you're experiencing something that our neighbors of color live with every day. And I invite you to open your hearts and listen to our neighbors, to step back and center the voices of our communities that have been impacted by community violence and police violence in our efforts to move forward. And to examine your discomfort, to think with compassion what it has felt like to live with the fear that you may be feeling for the first time for your whole life, to fear for the lives of your children. That is my commitment, and I invite you all to join me in that work. So thank you to each of you on this small but important step forward. The collaboration and teamwork here has made it possible. And again, I'll turn it over to Council Vice President for what may be the last word of this meeting. Council Vice President.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And I'm sorry for extending this conversation, but I, you know, I can't let this moment pass without acknowledging that June is LGBTQIA pride month, that these efforts were made possible, the fact that we have legalized same-sex marriage in this country and all of the rights, and clearly not enough rights, have been afforded to LGBTQIA Americans. But the gains that have been made have been made possible by the work of Black and Brown transgender identified people. And right now, my community, Black, trans, and gender nonconforming people and other transgender community members are out protesting because a Black trans woman was beaten and videotaped at protests in the Twin Cities. As we move forward with this community policing plan, it must include everyone. We cannot have community safety for some people and no vision and compassion for the most vulnerable parts of our community. And so, the most vulnerable members of our community. And so I wanted to highlight that, that this has to be fully intersectional, fully inclusive, fully making sure that we are setting up for undocumented people, for disabled members of our community, for women who have been victims of domestic violence. And so, community, council members, Department of Human Rights, we got to get this right for everybody. And as been noted on this call, it is going to be enormously challenging. I'm up for the challenge, and I hope that you all are as well.
Thank you, Council Vice President. With that, I think I will give you the last word and just note that when I'm asked if we're really going to do this in Minneapolis, the reason I know it's possible is because of your leadership, Council Vice President, that of Councilmember Jeremiah Ellison, Philippe Cunningham, Alondra Kano, and all of us behind you and with you as full partners and supporters in this work. So thank you for your leadership. With that, we have concluded all of the items on our agenda before us, seeing no business to come before us further. And without objection, I will adjourn the emergency meeting of the city council. Thank you.